And it's like, oh, he's talking to me.
Here.
Ramos.
President.
Severin.
Over here.
Here.
Pajara.
Here.
Okay, um, are there any additions to the agenda?
No.
Okay, audience participation, communication notice, um, public comments? Do we have any public comments?
I did not receive any.
Okay. Um, communications and announcements. What did I say?
No. You were looking at me, I thought you were, I was like, oh no, I missed something.
Is this a meeting for parents to join?
Yeah, you can come in.
No, is this like the one where parents come?
You can?
You can.
Absolutely.
Parents.
Yeah. Welcome to be here anytime.
Welcome. Okay, um, communications and announcements.
Right now, was this, was anything from the PTA?
Uh, I had it prepared.
Okay, so I want to make sure because that's all.
Uh, but we did get the bigger items in, right? So those will be installed at delay. And we got a new Gaga fit rule sign, the basketball hoop.
Ooh.
Definitely making some progress. And we had our first meet with PTA last week, so. Got our budget approved and all that kind of stuff.
Very good.
Thank you. Yeah, sorry about the delay, but with the, I guess, building it, shipping it.
They're here now.
They're here now. Yeah, so remember, board with the PTA with the, uh, the playground, it's kind of like the activity boards that they donated for delay, for the delay, uh, playground, north one. So we got there, hopefully they were coming in the summer, but a lot of delays with that bug at the way. But, the, uh, the signs actually, which is actually a pretty good timing anyway, since we had to put in that sidewalk for the access to the playground.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we're actually going to put them along the sidewalk so that any student can access that too, so wheelchair or not, they can actually access that as well too. So it's actually worked out pretty good timing, nice to have those installed. So thank you, PTA, for those.
Yeah.
It was a really nice addition.
Okay. Fantastic. Foyers.
I do have one, one announcement, just as a reminder, and I'll send out today, but this week, this Friday, is a half-day school improvement planning day. So that means around the weeks that we have school improvement, we do not have late starts because we gain that hour back for instruction. So tomorrow is not a late start, it's a regular Wednesday. So, I'll message one out today, but just want to make sure that, be sure that it goes through.
It's good the messages go out. I would always miss this. Okay, so, Foyers.
Yeah, as you can see, it's been, it was a busy, busy time this year for Foyers. We had quite a number of them, as you can see there, uh, from Smart Procure, Public Data Research, DuPage Policy Drive, Data Branch, Smart Procure again, uh, Grogan Heisen, Roditsky, and, uh, and LaPensa. So, and all of those were answered and provided the information that they sought.
Okay.
And we're going to see a lot of Smart, Smart Procure. Their company, they've always asked for information, uh, POs, uh, content information, every year, they're, pretty much every month, they request.
See them all. Okay. So move to public hearing on this whole year twenty-six budget. Can I get a motion, uh, to open a public hearing for the twenty-six budget?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Uh, Renam?
Aye.
My is aye. Pablo?
Aye.
Ramos?
Aye.
Severin?
Aye.
Pajara?
Aye.
Buckles?
Aye.
So, I'm going to pull up the, uh, presentation here, and I'm hoping Mr. Brennigan to discuss the fiscal year twenty-two six budgets.
Tonight is the final review of the budget for school year twenty-five, twenty-six, that begins July one, twenty-twenty-five, to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. Uh, a budget is not only mandatory by the state of Illinois, uh, but is also Darian's mission to allocate resources in a fiscally responsible manner. All Illinois school districts must have an approved budget on file in order to receive revenue from federal, states, and local sources. When we review the calendar of the budget, we can see the budget is not a one-time thing, but it is something that we continue to review and, and preparation for. Although the business office continually reviews the budget throughout the year to make sure that we're relying on point, this is the third time that we will have a community review for the board. I'm happy to report after July, we had, we communicated with the community and no concerns or questions were raised concerning our, our budget. So tonight, we requested the board review and approve the final budget for school year twenty-five, twenty-two six. So when we review the school budget, a budget begins a, a review of revenue sources. The largest revenue source for our school district is property taxes. Historically, this has been one of the safest avenues for revenue in that the homeowner is directly impacted and participates in Darian education. We are thankful to receive ninety-nine percent of all taxes owed to Darian education. As for state funding, we're, we receive evidence-based funding, which we are currently at tier three. Historically, we received about a one percent increase each year in evidence-based funding. Federal represent, uh, federal revenues have, have come back down to regular levels, about four percent overall funding. As you know, federal money is continuing to be a political hot potato, um, but it seems for right now, for this year, things have been settled. But as you know, we will continue to monitor and keep an eye on that moving forward. The second step after revenues is we begin to review our expenses. Uh, the disparate revenue expenses, education cannot happen without employees and therefore salaries and benefits, as you know, is one of the largest expenses for a school district. Uh, for Darian School District, that's, uh, about, just, or just about over sixteen million dollars. The next largest expense would be purchased services, which is about three-point-nine million dollars. Purchased services include, but are not limited to repair services, education consulting, special education services, cleaning services, and much more. The next largest expense would be, um, supplies at one-point-two million. Of course, that's books, paper, grants, all the things that our students need. Followed by other expenses, about one, of one million dollars, that's membership fees and mostly bond and interest payments for our bond. And finally, our capital costs, which is, for this year, five-hundred-sixty-five thousand dollars. Before we continue to look at our, um, revenue and expenses, we like to always look at CPI or the Consumer Price Index. This is the Consumer Price Index for the last twelve years. Uh, this number for twenty-twenty-five is from December of twenty-twenty-four and is at two-point-nine percent interest rate. That comes, becomes very important when we start reviewing our levy, which comes right after our budget review in November, December. CPI is something that we definitely keep our eye on because it is literally the cost that we pay for items that we need each year. And although we see, uh, CPI coming down, it's still not at the levels that we are hoping for, that Fed keeps on talking about, they'd like to get it at two percent. And you can definitely see that the next, um, slide, as we review the long-term history of CPI, as you can see, that this indicates that although CPI has been coming down the last few years, the overall three-year average is about three, four-point-two-seven percent. Um, so you can see that fluctuation and that when we add that to our average expense, that's the number that we use, that little bit higher number because of the great fluctuation in CPI that we continue to have. Uh, you probably have noticed that just in the last few months, as CPI went down to two-point-three, but then unfortunately, this month went back up to two-point-nine. Uh, but hopefully, we are hoping to see that come back down. Uh, the only good news about that is with higher CPI, we do receive, uh, higher interest rates on our investments. We current investments are locked in at three-point-nine percent. Our budget forecast, we have forecast receive about, eh, just over eight-hundred thousand dollars, just in interest, not investment for this year. So with that said, let's take a closer look at our revenues for Darian sixty-one. Um, we do show a little bit lower of revenue over year over year, but keep in mind, that's because we've come down off of historic highs of our levy being five percent and is now at two-point-nine percent. Again, our interest rate was at five percent and now is coming down to four percent. Federal funding came off of highs of ten percent and now we're lowering levels of four to three percent. Um, evidence-based funding from the state is flat at about one percent. Um, we've talked about s- uh, state funding or local funding for CPPRT, which was at three, three-hundred thousand dollars, uh, the year before, but this year is down to seventy thousand dollars. Uh, we're also going to see a decrease in revenue for Fund Fifty and Fund Fifty-One. But even still with all these decreases, we're going to show an increase in revenue of six-hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars, eight-hundred-and-seventy-seven, or an overall increase in our revenue of two-point-seven-four percent. This is a breakout of our, a graph of our revenue sources. As you can see, this shows that property taxes is our largest revenue source, just over nineteen million dollars, followed by state revenue at two-point-five million dollars. Of course, that includes evidence-based funding. Um, local revenue at one-point-five million dollars, that includes the interest on investment. And then our federal revenue at nine-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand dollars.
No, 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 sir.
No, no.
I was going to say.
Cutbacks.
Ouch.
Let's take a closer look at expenditures. Education expense increa- eh, is increasing, you'll see there, by seven-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand dollars. Uh, this is mostly due to salary increase and our benefit increase of ten percent. Funding, uh, operation and maintenance, increased expense of four-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand dollars, but keep in mind, that includes three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars and capital cost for Mark Delay piping project, that was the interest that we received from our bonds. And also, re- a request for fifty thousand dollars for a new truck for the maintenance team. Um, of course, you can see there, in the last year, last year, we split our social security and IMRF. Um, that was, uh, requested for us by the auditor and has been fully implemented. And the rest of expenditures have minimal increases or an overall increase of five-point-six percent. Uh, if we remove the capital projects and the truck, we're just at an increase of four percent, which is below our average of four-point-two-seven, which we saw from CPI. Here's a bar graph, just breaking out our expenses. From the expenditure side, we see the increase in salaries, we can see the leveling offer increase in our benefits. Uh, that includes a ten percent increase in, um, health insurance. We can see the slight increase in our services. As we discussed, we're seeing, uh, an increased student base for our LANS Eve Special Ed program and the riders on, on some of those buses. So that's going to increase, increase that purchase services. Uh, we can see that our supplies are starting to level out just a little bit, um, and our capital projects are remaining flat, along with our other expenses as well, which mostly includes our bond and interest payments. So, to break this out, um, by object, we have our salaries at fourteen-point-five million, which is our majority of our costs, followed by our benefits at two-point-seven million, and serv- followed by services at three-point-nine million. Remember, services includes our LANS program for special ed, um, students. We can see our supplies are at one-point-one million, capital projects at five-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, and other at one-point-three. Any questions? So what is this helping to fund and represent? Well, these are not just numbers, but this actually, um, staffs a hundred-and-thirty-six certified teachers, that's administrators, psychologists, social workers, and teachers. It also staffs forty classified staff, that's aides, bus drivers, custodians, food service, secretaries. This, uh, provides education for over one-thousand students here in Darian sixty-one, including Mark Delay has four-hundred-and-fifty-three students, Lace at three-hundred-and-eighty-six students, Eisenhower four-hundred-and-fourteen students. This also helps maintain educational spaces of over two-hundred thousand square feet of learning space for Darian sixty-one. This is going to help fund, um, new Chromebooks for our third graders and sixth graders. This also is going to do a Mac, uh, book update for our teachers and educators. This continues our, our successful math program of an investment of thirty-three thousand dollars to continue, um, great minds in math. This also is an investment in our climate and culture here at Darian sixty-one to know exactly, um, how we are doing with our fellow employees and staff members. This includes a large investment, forty thousand dollars for professional development, including our MTSS training, uh, for our staff. This includes three thousand dollars investment in STEM, our STEM program, to continue to advance data. Also includes the Mark Delay bathrooms, um, for, in those facilities. And a communication budget of twenty thousand dollars to help communicate with, um, the community.
Climate and culture, that's human access.
Yes.
Okay.
So in summary, we compare our expenditures, our, our revenues versus expenditures. We do show a slight deficit in, um, education of four-hundred-and-forty thousand, an operation deficit of eighty-five thousand dollars, transportation slight deficit of five thousand dollars. Social Security, IMRF of a hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand and a hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars. And our bond interest, a slight deficit of nine-thousand-five-hundred. When we review this, though, the, some of these are a deficit by design in order to start, um, expending some of our fund surplus, especially our surpluses in Fund Fifty and Fund Fifty-One. Also, keep in mind that this includes the three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars, um, and Fund Twenty for our Mark Delay water pipes and bathroom replacements. An additional fifty thousand for our building maintenance truck. When we remove those, including the, the expenditures from Fund Fifty-One and Fund Fifty, that actually is, is not a deficit of eight-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, but a deficit of a hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars, um, uh, which is a minimum deficit, but also, but also is a, but we also, I also believe we will have surplus at the end of the year, but unfortunately, I have to represent a worst-case scenario for budget purposes because of unforeseen conditions in our current environment.
Any questions?
Speaking of our capital improvements, I always like to review our bonds and what we have done it for the last few years. You can see that we made quite an improvement here at Darian sixty-one. Um, and as you see, after, after the Mark Delay water pipes, we current, we, we had a remaining, a deficit, meaning we have spent all the bond proceeds. Um, but the remaining interest is in Fund Twenty, um, for upcoming capital projects, including remaining, the remaining payment for Mark Delay's bathrooms and upcoming life safety updates projects that we'll hear again tonight shortly. According to the state of Illinois, anytime we review our budget, we must also show our fund balance sheet. I'm happy to tell you that the fund balance sheet is always represented at Darian sixty-one at every single board meeting. It can be found in the consent agenda under B four, the summary of funds report. And so that's a report from June of twenty-twenty-five, uh, required by the state. We've also talked about the fund balance calculation. This fund balance is a review for the state of Illinois as well, and also will be reviewed during our levy in November and December. You can see at the far right, the ninety-three-point-one-two percent. If that number was two-hundred percent, the state of Illinois would require us to submit a budget of excess spending in order to spend on any surplus that we have. We have a surplus of ninety-three percent, which I would say overall is a healthy surplus to have in case of unforeseen conditions. The majority of our surplus can be found in Fund Twenty, which the majority of that surplus came from the bond interest, interest rates that were, uh, put there in Fund Twenty for future capital projects. So this concludes our budget review for twenty-five, twenty-six, and I'll open up for any questions.
No questions? No? Okay. Oh, so we're motioning.
We have asked if there's public comments.
Is there any public? All right. So now we're motioning. Can I get a motion, um, to close the public hearing on the fiscal year twenty-six budget?
So moved. One second.
Can you?
Myers, aye. Pablo?
Aye.
Ramos?
Aye.
Severin?
Aye.
Pajara?
Aye.
Buckles?
Aye.
Renam?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all of that. Um, now, can I get a motion to adopt the fiscal year twenty-six budget as presented?
So moved.
Okay.
Any discussion?
I just want to say thank you again. If you can tell us a lot, and just going back to those, uh, to the initiatives board, uh, I know that we talked a lot about communications in the last, you know, role setting. Um, so we kind of sat down and said, would be a kind of a reasonable budget for right now to kind of test out, you know, like you said, some third parties or test out something to kind of look to. Maybe some things that Communications Committee or Committee Engagement Committee would suggest too. We have some of that too, so we have something in there. Um, I am currently looking at, so I've got some, uh, information from one third-party source for Communications as well right now, so kind of investigating that. But at least we have something in there to kind of move forward with as we talk about as well.
In there, like Fund Twenty, is that?
That would be, maybe like a purchase service.
Oh.
Yeah. Yes.
Got it.
I think in general, too, as we think about the budget and the support from the community, uh, as you mentioned, the significant source of our, our revenues, that, you know, acknowledging the work that's been done in the district over the past few years, that we have all, I think in the last two years, we moved from one school in the district being rated commendable in the state of Illinois to three school, all three schools in our district, reaching that commendable status. And, uh, I think a lot of that goes to the hard work, the intentional budget planning to support these efforts at the district, so, um, yeah, just thank you for all the work on that and, um, looking forward to continuing to support the great work in the district.
Any further discussion? Go call.
Uh, Pablo?
Aye.
Ramos?
Aye.
Severin?
Aye.
Pajara?
Aye.
Buckles?
Aye.
Renam?
Aye.
Myers, aye.
Okay, next, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items six A through six G by two?
Sophie.
Gabby?
Second.
Allison? Any discussion?
I just want to share with the board, as you can see, the last two items there, five, one, and two, we have some staff who've been with us for a long time who are going to be retiring, uh, or some big shoes are filled. Uh, we're actually looking at, um, some, um, you know, plans to kind of see, you know, from here now, mostly because Ms. Bolton was kind of waving back and forth, maybe another year, not sure, but now this for sure, another year, so we are working on, well, what is that, you know, what does that succession plan look like to continue that, that role? Does it look like a different role because she does so much, uh, same with Mrs. Pascatori too, she does, you know, much as well too. So, maybe looking to see if we can hire, you know, add another person just now and then as she, you know, needs, or can have mentor. She's such a wealth, wealth of powers, probably have succession to do that too. Just making sure that those, those, um, those spots are filled, especially in the half-year transition with that too. So those are some things we're working on right now, just working out what she knows.
Ms. Pascatori does kids' club too, so it's going to be a lot to fill her shoes there as well.
Exactly, yeah. I'm trying to commercially keep up.
She lives down the street from me, I'll go nag her.
She still says, she goes, I can't believe I'm not going to be, it's like, you know, but.
But you can. But you can, exactly.
I'll try, I, I, I try, you know, but, so.
Didn't you tell us there might be other changes with staffing of kids' club and stuff with whatever, um, Mrs. Anderson's going to do?
Yeah, you know, we, uh, we've had some small talks, we have not had a chance to really sit down and go through that yet because we started the school year.
Right.
Um, there may too, but we will be sitting down the next few weeks here, and I can give an update on that as well too, the next few months here, to kind of see what's, what are the next steps, what are we looking at, and we'll be playing a vote for that, absolutely, yes.
I could look forward to hearing that because I hear lots about, still lots of things about kids' club, and I love kids' club. And it's so important to our community, so.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Right, Pablo?
Aye.
Ramos?
Aye.
Severin?
Aye.
Pajara?
Aye.
Buckles?
Aye.
Renam?
Aye.
Myers, aye.
Thank you, board.
Okay. Superintendent's report. That's you.
Any, um, any questions on enrollment dashboard? Or, I know Mrs. who dared to ask for the, the personnel reports there now, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Kind of set, you know, on September, probably pieces are still there, so we have that too. So any questions on those two items?
Just one question related to the enrollment report, is, as we're looking through the budget, seeing the, like, um, enrollments by building, is that a trend that we think we'll continue to see? Because I, I know.
The smart delay is low.
Delay had the lar- had the largest.
Oh, no, it's least that's, because they were always around like four hundred or something.
Yeah, it is, usually it's about, we've seen that, it's been consistent, and actually it was down a couple of years ago, now it's up higher anyways. Remember with Mark Delay, preschool is also there as well too.
Oh, that's right.
There as well, so we have a preschool, which is about seventy-some students or similar students. And that's another factor there as well too, so.
Okay.
And Eisenhower still has a bigger.
Like four something.
Maybe three classes of bigger bubble of kids too. So, but it's going to balance it out to about what those numbers show there. So we're, we hover around, the last, like, three, four years, it's been like twelve-seventy to like twelve-fifteen, you know, somewhere around that range or so, so that's where we've been hovering, you know. But then, all of a sudden, we'll get like ten more kids. You know, like this year, we had like, you know, five kids who've been up to start of the year, so you never know with that too, so. But that's a good question as well.
Thanks.
Sorry, last minute question, that's. Okay, next, um, student spotlights, gather, I just want to remind the board that I'm going to be, actually we have our minister of committee next Monday, and we're going to be setting up student spotlights for the buildings to kind of go through the school years. Just to remind the board that we're going to set that schedule up. And so wherever those student spotlights are, when the building is, it's Mark Delay's turn, it's Eisenhower's turn, Lace's turn, we'll have it at the school. That's always good to have those student spotlights, I just want to remind, we're going to have that, I don't have that just yet, but I'll have that for everyone at the next board meetings. We're going to have that scheduled for everybody for that too. And then, it's okay with, um, the board, is it okay if I have Studio DC go now because they're here?
No.
And they present on the facilities report right now, so they might listen to me talk about other stuff. And they can, they can do the reports, is that okay to report?
Corey didn't back up Frank and, you know, help him out with his doughnut thing, but that's okay, it's all right, Corey. We'll let you go. I'm not a dinner person.
Corey, do you want to come on up?
Is anyone offended if I eat my dinner?
Well, I mean, you know, Corey didn't bring any dessert, but that's, I'm okay with it.
I'll share my chips.
I'm okay with it.
Motion denied. No, just kidding. Go for it, yeah.
I'm sorry.
She wouldn't have to do, you know. It's okay, Corey.
So, Corey, I'm sure you guys, use yourselves for the board.
Yeah, I'm Corey Boaz, I'm a couple of Studio DC architects, right, it is a Clayton Blue, I'm an architect, I've definitely helped out through the district here with all the projects since we started here a couple of years ago. Um, then we're going to talk about, a little bit about the, uh, the help life safety in those facilities that we're working on. Um, a little bit of history on the help life safety, and I just jumped to the next slide. Um, kind of backup, why we do a help life safety survey, so, um, sure, being the education, everyone has heard about the Our Lady of Angels fire back in nineteen fifty-eight. Unfortunately, ninety-two children perished, and we, uh, also perished. Since that happened, the state of Illinois specifically has basically required licensed architects, licensed professionals to walk every inch of the square foot and all the sites of the school, so in state of Illinois, very ten years. And upgrading building codes, um, and upgrading requirements. Since that time, there have not been a single death due to fires in state of Illinois, and so, that is, I believe we might be the only state where you can afford that.
Mine?
So that's one reason we want to keep doing this. So, um, it's called Designial Help Life Safety Survey because it is requirement in everything. So, um, it's called Designial Health Life Safety Survey because it's requirement for every ten years. So, um, on a yearly basis, the ROE does walk through thirty-day, um, beginning of the year and does a bit of notes of what needs to be upgraded on a yearly term basis. Um, the ten-year survey is a snapshot in time for, from the time we walk the buildings. So, for example, we started walking around January of this year. Had a whole team up, not only ourselves, but, um, other, um, professional engineers and some of our consultants walk through the buildings. We've got our eyes on everything that's going on. And every ten years, we need to submit a report that contains basically a statement of existing conditions with facilities. It's a, it's a word report. Life safety reference plans that basically show all your floor plan, all your site plans. And along with that, basically a spreadsheet of violations that may be involved with those spreadsheets. And throughout the plans and CAD plans. Also lists that enrollment data, lists where the nearest fire department is, these nearest, um, all first responders and this is various activities, and things that are included in some of those, and things that are on the wrong. So, these violations, they are indeed recorded as, uh, like A, B, or C items. A meaning urgent, B meaning required, and C meaning recommended. Which means if it's urgent, those items need to be upgraded within one year, within one calendar year. If they are required items, those items need to be rectified within five years. If they're recommended, they either need to be completed within ten years, or since they're recommended, basically, they just keep going on, and the district finds money to achieve those. And all the A items, when it comes to funding, you have to complete the A items first, the items, and then the C items in that, in that, in that order. And interiors are more, more, um, more required than exterior. So you cannot levy life safety plans to complete extra work before you complete, complete parting and site work. And then can't levy plans to do any B or C items unless you do the A items first. So that's a brief rundown of what the health life safety. Let's go to the next one. The way to, um, basically get these fundings and all these items approved is by amendment process. So we have a ten-year health life safety report, which does get approved and gets submitted to the state as approval. That is your snapshot in time. And then to actually levy funds for these or basically approve work to proceed, is amendment process, where we basically indicate which item we will complete. This can happen for like individual projects. So if there's like one thing we wanna do, it's just a simple one amendment. If we just wanna do like twenty or thirty items, it's also again one item that we reference back to a HLS report. And if there's something that does pop up that did not under-report, we can just add that too. So it's not, we don't have to always go back to the ten, to a ten-year. If there's something else that popped that we may have missed, because honestly it's not perfect, that we can just simply add that to the, to the items, so. It's, yes, it's a snapshot in time, but it's also a living document that you can just keep adding or revising as. We jumped on the screen. Already talked about the priorities, sorry, I was jumping around a little bit. And then Clayton will kind of talk about what the actual recourse actually consists of. So this is the, an example of the health life safety reference plans. So, to the left is an example of LACE. It was essentially a floor plan that shows, um, areas throughout the building where we located the violations. So, the top right sort of is an enlarged plan that shows little red tags with numbers. And those tags can be referenced to the schedules on the sheets, which lists, um, essentially the violation in that area. So essentially, this, uh, this plan shows, um, uh, it keeps, uh, it shows each and every violation on each plan.
Is this, I'm sorry, Clayton, is this the plan that was when you guys walked in January?
Yeah, this is just, this is an example of that, so when we did walk.
This, this plan is not.
This is after the surveys, yeah. This is, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, these plans are not included in the package because these are like huge plans and PDFs for this. Honestly, if we give you, like, see how small that writing is right there? That's literally how big it is, so it's like, it's, it's really difficult to view if the board wants to. So like the facilities, and we talk about this a little bit further, we start to plan out like what we wanna accomplish. We wanna look through each of the plans, we'll look at and kind of go from there with the facilities committee, but they have to take these plans and work on them a lot. We have, if anybody wants to come see, we have, we asked for them because I have good eyes, I couldn't even tell. So we asked for big plans, so we have it available too, to kind of go through everything. But then what was given to the board, that list of the violations, A, B, and C, that's, that's kind of like the table version of this, I don't know if it's correct.
So we still have doors without, like, the tempered glass and stuff, like, that are not, really?
So the next, um, item that we, that we submitted is the list of violations spreadsheet. So here's an example of delay. So essentially, this shows, you know, those A, B, and C items. And then this is also used to be referenced from the reference plans. So you can, while you're going through the reference plan, you can see which each, what each item is and what violation is being broken. And then also recommendation to correct those violations. And then essentially at the end, total costs associated with fixing those violations. So after doing that for each of the schools, um, we put together, uh, we calculated the cost estimate, uh, the total cost for each of the schools. So in the top right, you can see, uh, Mark Delay, uh, if they're in the blue. It's, uh, listed from priority A to B. So again, A is within one year, it's urgent. B is, uh, required, so in the next five years, and then C is, uh, recommended in the next ten years. So you can see the cost there, and then also cost with architecture and engineering fees. So Mark Delay, uh, is a little over four million. Eisenhower, a little over seven million total. LACE, a little over six million. And then there at the end is a combination of, of all the schools, which is a little bit over seven and a half million.
By violation, does that mean like, until, I mean, that the school is not safe? It means that there are items that need to be fixed up to be in compliance with.
That is correct, yeah. I was gonna ask that same question.
Cause like violation just sounds so.
Not right.
Not right, exactly.
And do the, any of these figures include any of the asks or wants from the principals and the board yet?
That is a perfect segue to the next episode.
I do wanna add, I haven't done this. So, um, yeah, so that seventeen and a half million total, that does basically bottom line includes our fees. Now that's into eight dollars. So let's say in, like, you say you indeed cover the As and Bs and then don't hit the Cs until like twenty thirty-three, twenty thirty-four, those costs will obviously escalate, but we need to put it down as a point in time.
And I appreciate the clarification, because violations are just, you know, you're gonna see, there's some things, it's just that we have to address because that's always the case with each item, we have this, but it doesn't mean our schools are not safe. They are safe, it's just, this is why we do the walkthrough, because we can't keep up with everything. This allows us to keep up with it and make sure that we stay safe.
And also, I'm just speaking it totally, so several districts, they will do a lot of the work on their own. They will not necessarily need the code that has been done that are needed to make those improvements. I'm not saying those, those spaces are, are against code or are causing harm, but they just need to be brought up to a specific code. So some of these violations are indeed, hey, the carpet is wearing and tearing and causing potential tripping hazards. That's not something that is gonna cause if you're harmed, just do, but it's just some of these things that need to look at. A lot, a lot, sometimes like there's exit signs that are not quite lit up or some lighting is not up to, uh, up to standards or things like that. There's a lot of little things, but nothing, if, if there's something we would have seen, we would have came a lot earlier and said, you guys need to address this now. But that's not the case. And that's when the ROE do their walk-throughs on a yearly basis, they also make this thing a big job, so. So moving on to the next, uh, portion of the presentation, we also did a facility assessment, uh, survey of the schools. Uh, it's similar to the HLS survey, uh, we could have documented existing conditions, um, of every school and review things such as, you know, site elements, um, the building envelope, uh, interior environments, and all mechanical plumbing and electrical components. And this is also where we took into, when we walked through the buildings, talked with the admin, talked with the staff, talked with the principals. They indicated, hey, can we do this here? And we included those items in the facility assessment report as well. So I don't know if that booklet is in the packet, but again, there's items in there that will list. And these are just a couple, few items that we have, we have targeted to be discussing.
So including the wish list?
Yes.
That go up into one or two. But also too, just to refer back to, Corey, this was also done when you came back, when you were here, like in January, February?
That's correct.
So some of these may have been addressed in some ways already, they're on the list as well.
Also correct, so some site elements specifically over at, uh, Mark Delay, a lot of concrete work has been addressed already, but that still does show up on this report because again, it's a snapshot in time. So, yes, so the first is the site elements. So this, uh, cost would include patching concrete sidewalks, curbs, uh, patching and sealing asphalt, replacing landscape padding on playground. There's, there's the costs associated with those. Eisenhower's a little bit higher because that includes, uh, replacing the tennis court surfacing, uh, new chain link fencing and new hand railing.
I remember the LACE blacktop, we already took care of that. With that, that was, you know, so nice question.
Where is the chain link fence, fencing?
Around the tennis courts.
So that would be bringing it down?
Yeah, we bring it down, I mean, that, yeah, we have to kind of say what we wanna do with that, you know, because there's a lot of, there's a lot that can go into that, so that's some of the bigger costs. If we wanna redo it and have a brand-new tennis court do that, then yeah, that's a big cost because we have to resurface the whole thing. It's so bad. And then you wanna do another fence, this level, because that's so old, and a bit too far, and there's there too. So that's, if we wanted to do that, but there's other options we can explore. Like if Y C wants to do something with that too, is their option. So there's a lot of things that go into that as well too, but it's just a matter of, if we're gonna redo it, we need something to go off of, so that's one of the options too.
Okay.
So next would be the light and bright. This work includes reflecting all A C T drop ceilings, um, replacement of the lighting, the LED lighting, uh, interior painting, uh, and then replacement of the floors in both classrooms and the corridors with new carpet and, uh, or L, or V C T. So, uh, just to brighten up the space, make it more inviting, better for students, a better learning environment for them. So Mark Delay, we estimate about one to one point five million. Eisenhower, three point five to four point two million, and then LACE, uh, around two point five to three point. And more on this, so, um, I believe, uh, your previous architect did a facility assessment as well. So we took all those items that had not been addressed and updated and brought them forward, because there's still some items that we'll not address as part of that assessment, so. Um, these numbers are indeed accurate as opposed to going back to the twenty twenty-nine report?
One twenty-two.
Twenty twenty, okay. Then, uh, the next, uh, recommended project would be a door, replacement door upgrade project. And that, uh, while we were walking through the facility, we noticed a lot of the doors are older. Some of the wood veneers, uh, chipping, a lot of the hardware is, looks original or is original to the building. So a lot of the hardware is the knobs, so it's, it doesn't meet ADA requirements for graspability. So this, this upgrade would include new interior exterior doors, new hardware. Um, and then also, some of the doors are not ADA compliant, uh, with floor clearances, so we would need to renovate those spaces to make the doorways accessible for people in wheelchairs. And then there are the associated costs, per school, Mark Delay's six hundred fifty to nine hundred thousand. Eisenhower, one point five to two million, and then LACE, uh, seven hundred fifty thousand, two million.
Doors are expensive.
They are.
Doors are very expensive. And, uh, this is where it was kind of a combination between the HLS and the facility assessment. Some of your doors do have items that need to be addressed, some of the hardware is outdated, it needs to be for your security and things like that. So some of those items will show up on the HLS, but if you do, uh, give some of these improvements, you'll basically go through it still.
How many, like, are there interior doors that have to be fire-rated?
There's a lot.
Do classroom doors have to be fire-rated?
Not necessarily. It depends on, I don't believe any of the classroom doors in these facilities require the fire rating. Um, there are separations of, um, partitions, you see, like, every, uh, so if a new building is put on, that is considered a, a separate building, so.
So like these doors, right?
Those doors would be fire-rated.
Okay.
So there's a smoke partition or a party wall partition or a fireplace partition. But classroom doors in these facilities are not required to be, uh, fire-rated. Smoke partitions potentially, I don't believe they have those in this facility, but, um.
Do classroom doors that exit to the outdoors need to be fire-rated?
No. Next is roofing replacement at, uh, at LACE here, um, and then also replacement of the metal coping. While we were walking the roof, we noticed, um, the roof is showing some wear and tear, uh, and showing some age. Some of the roofing is laminating, stuff like that. And, uh, we estimated the cost to be around one point four to one point seven million.
Did we just do roofs?
We did, yes. Whatever you're.
I don't like, I don't hear about roofs.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so remember when we did our last, um, bond, we were going with that Mark Delay and Eisenhower roofs were, were in bad shape. The LACE roofs, it was estimated between about another six to ten years, you know, for that. So that's where our coming up, so about six to ten years are still coming up soon, so that's where that's gonna be.
And I mean to ask you guys a quick one, but I think it's important information. Does that cost include taking the solar panels off the roof in order to do that replacement?
Taking off a roof?
Well, sorry, taking off the solar panels in order to do that replacement.
It would include taking it off, putting it back on, it would not include that.
Is there an estimate on that?
I could not provide a estimate on that based on.
What would be your ballpark estimate?
I think of a ballpark.
Okay.
Maybe we get, we're gonna have to have that.
Correct.
Yeah, it's the, that, that'll be, I guess, I'm not on the facilities committee, but a question of are there solar panels producing enough or helping the building?
You know, yeah, that's a great question. Unfortunately, that should be brought up as a deal, it's a new point because the district entered into a twenty-year agreement for solar panels with that, so we have to keep them regardless. But we have to take them off and then go back on with them, yeah, so.
What's the big deal with the solar panels? Like, don't those companies always come out and they're like, oh, if you ever need a replacement, like, we'll take care of the solar panels. We'll take them off and we'll put them on.
Yeah, but in the agreements, I would admit, it's, it's not really.
It's not, huh?
And if, I'm just speaking it clearly, let's, let's say the idea is to put up, um, the existing solar panels back on, I would not recommend doing that. With a new, with a new roof, you would, if you wanna revisit portable pigs, you'd want to put a, a new system up there to, one, keep the longevity of the new roof membranes. And, two, you don't wanna have to put an old one back on and then come back within five years and put something new. So you don't wanna put as little maintenance on as possible. So the next capital improvement project would be, um, the family consumer sciences at Eisenhower. Uh, renovation there, um, and a secure vestibule upgrade. So right now, the existing school, it doesn't have a secure vestibule. There's, uh, a secure vestibule allows somebody to be in the vestibule and talk to someone at the same time while they're buzzing in to the building. So this would include, um, that reconfiguration of the existing vestibule into a true secure vestibule and also renovating the, the main office as well as the F A C S rooms. This would include new bullet-resistant walls, bullet-resistant windows, and upgrades to access control as well. This would include new bullet resistant walls, bullet resistant windows, and upgrades to access control as well. That's estimated to be about two point seven to three point two million.
So this portion would be bringing the admin basically close to the southwest portion of the vestibule.
They would just be flipping the office and the classroom?
I wish it was that easy, but basically.
Just make it that easy.
And then lastly, a playground upgrade, so Mark delay has two separate playgrounds. So a full playground replacement as well as new playground surfacing. So around four hundred thousand at Mark delay for the two locations, and then at Lace around two hundred twenty five thousand for the one playground.
So a couple items we did, Matthew, if you can get on here, was over Eisenhower with the locker rooms being addressed. Also, which I'll put in the report as well.
Locker rooms.
I mean, I think.
But any, really quick, or any question on the separation, how we've done? Because you're gonna see there is some overlap between the life safety reports and the facility reports. But again, this is really important, it's also including kind of our wish lists and things we're working on, all of those too. So it's all encompassing reports, but it's, we have to break it out as well too for life safety as well, because that includes, we have to turn it out as, as of twenty twenty six, so that's what we do. Any questions?
Can you talk about overlap? Like if we're looking at the, the secure vestibule at Eisenhower, does that come up on the life safety report as like an item? Or this is just?
So the only portion at the life safety report for that secure vestibule is some of the exterior doors in that area need to be addressed or would be recommended to be addressed. So covering, and there's some other items in the F A C S rooms and any administration rules as well that will pop up on the H L S report. But obviously, if we do proceed with a secure vestibule and switch of the classrooms to the administration, that's gonna cover all those items. But yeah, to Ms. Lingman's comment, so the, the H L S are specific violations, they have to be moved to the state.
Right, okay.
And this is something we took from our facility assessment tool. So after doing our facility assessment, we inputted all the information and developed these graphs that show an annual budget summary, so total cost per year. And these, these numbers can be, you know, switched to different years, but this is the, you know, total budget we found out from, from our facility assessment tool per year. And then the next slide shows a combination of the two. So this is a breakout of total H L S cost in combination to the, the total facility assessment cost. So this is again broken out in priority A, B, and C. So the first item there is the A one year, A prior priorities, and you can see the total cost for H L S there. And then next to it is the total facility assessment cost associated with priority K. And then again, B and C there. And then it, we calculate the totals there at the end, and then the total cost combination there at the bottom right. From fifty one within the next ten years.
Yeah, that's right. So one thing that we, going through with the H L S, you can see there's just a hair short of a hundred ninety thousand dollars that need to be addressed for H L S at, at the end of the, within a year from submission of this. So probably before the end of twenty six, twenty seven. A lot of these are electrically related. So I'm not saying any of these will cause harm, but they're like exit, exit lights are not, are not red. Or need more exit lights, some smokes, some smoke on devices, some emergency devices to indicate there is a fire in fact that. Those are major items out of the facilities. Overall, staff maintenance is doing a wonderful job.
Okay.
Questions?
I do want to jump back, can you jump back?
Yeah, what was that one?
That one. So these graphs, so there is a spreadsheet that we did share with Frank that basically does list every single item that has popped up in our facility assessment, there's hundreds of them. And they're simply by, indicate what the item is. So for example, this, we got carpet. This carpet is probably two hundred years old, probably needs to be addressed now. Does it really need to be addressed? Probably not, it's an issue. So you can move, move back and forth on that spreadsheet and it'll change those graphs lifecycle. So like you say, you've got a lot of, a lot of style types with some areas are only down a hundred thousand dollars, some are at five million, ten million. So if you want to balance your budget, you can move things forward or backwards, it's just prioritize. And that's what we discuss with the facilities committees and the admin and figure out, hey, where do we really want to spend so much money? And we can, that's the way we can use our future plan.
Well, I know that this is online, it looks like we only got the first page from each school's listing.
Oh, when it turned off?
Yeah, so it looks like there's probably about three or four pages per school. It just, it makes it a little easier to kind of spread out to look. So if we could get additional copies of the entire document, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Is there any other, I mean, or you're welcome to have access to those questions too if you want. Give me that too as well in the facilities committee, but share that with everybody as well. There's a lot, just want to make sure you have the information for here first, you know, so you have this.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't, the facilities assessment, like those numbers, because I see the violations listed in here and I just, the,
Yeah, so.
So like the other stuff, I'd be interested in seeing that too.
Yeah, that's on the bigger spreadsheet.
Right, yeah, I'd like.
So I thought there was a lot to kind of shove in, so that's where, that's why we have, I just provided this, which is the overall.
Right.
And then I can definitely ensure that that spreadsheet that has everything.
I'd just be curious.
Roll along while with that as much as you want to, just kind of think of the background.
Yeah.
When is our facilities meeting?
We haven't scheduled yet. We were waiting for this to now have conversations, because as you can see, there's a lot, you know. I mean, it's happy that we don't have a lot of the priority, like A, that's urgent, because the, you know, staff's effect has really done a nice job of keeping up, especially the age of buildings, keeping them able to cope with everything too. We have priority B, and so that's, we have to now start talking because, going back to what you said before, Dana, when we did our last facilities plan, we did our bonding wall, if you're looking at, a lot of that was A and B stuff. Those roofs, parking lots, all of that, there too. And then the C, we had some in there that kind of recommended, which we kind of pick off through the years. But then the rest of that's, you know, all those blunt items, you know, were, we couldn't do. So that's where now we have to have that talk again, like how to prioritize, we need to really go out and engage and talk with you. Because, you know, we, we can do right now, the A and B stuff, yes, our bonding wall, we can do that. That's just gonna be the stuff again, which won't exceed, you know, the roof and those other things, but we know that we need more and like to provide more for our students too, like that's the vestibule and the light and bright and the locker rooms, you know, like that. So there's a lot that we want to talk, because now, now is the time to have the conversations. And to even plan it out, what makes sense, how to prioritize, what's kind of the timeline to have the grand shop those further conversations.
We had staff or anyone, yeah, looking at what types of, I'm thinking about like for like light, light and bright, right? There's grants and, you know, rebate programs for replacement lighting.
Yes.
And so like, that's probably something we should be aware about when we go into these, that there might be some things that we can do if we're able to, I mean, I know my public ability will really solve our lights or.
Right.
Very quickly, our comments.
A hundred percent.
And I think it would be Eisenhower, that was.
That was a lot of, yeah.
And there's other leads too, like, you know, the state has, that has the maintenance grants, which actually happened this year, but that's something too, it's like the one where you put off fifty, you get fifty, you know, it's like. So that's, well, using those for advantage, like all those are, so there's a lot of things, but in order to have that, we really have to now take time and really kind of go through this and really plan this out, because, you know, there's a lot, and you can't just keep pushing everything off. And so we have to figure out, what is the main priority? But then, how do we do it to, where do those conversations as well?
I know there was some discussion, you know, I just mentioned some of the overlap projects, like the vestibule at Eisenhower that stands out. And, you know, it would be interesting, I don't know, if we'd be able to figure this out or with, with your help, like, you know, doing one project that's really important, but how does that impact, you know, the vestibule itself down the road? Are we gonna have to replace the things that we maybe did early on? So those kinds of discussions?
We definitely provide kind of overview on what some of the items would be compared from the assessment first of the H L S, but kind of knock out the red flags.
Maybe being part of our conversations, we'll do that too, because, you know, the help of that as well too. Because that's, yeah, that's all, no, it's good. You're right, because.
Some of it doesn't make sense to do unless you're going to do, it's kind of like at home, right? You start a project and it's not worth doing at home.
Yeah, never do lights, that's great, but then, that's what it forms, you know, or you can't do, so there's a lot of things to do. For desks, I'd love to do the desks, but we're doing the desks, chairs. We want to have the other pieces as well too, so it's a whole, it's a whole, it's so much.
When you look at this list like this, it's just so daunting.
It really is.
Really is overwhelming.
But it's a starting.
Yeah, you have to have that.
We have to have that.
And the bond is five years, right?
Yeah, I, yes, we'll be holding off. So now is the time to have that conversation because we can plan accordingly.
Do we say thanks or?
Do we though?
I appreciate your work and thank you.
So the, but the priority B stuff is stuff that has to be done, but it's just like, we have more time. We have the five years as opposed to the one.
Yeah, it's not stuff that's gonna cause immediate, immediate addressing. A lot of those things are like, hey, your mechanical units, they're, they're due. Start thinking about them, but they're not, they don't need to be done. So you start, you get more maintenance report, maintenance calls and things like that, you probably should have addressed these. The more calls you get, it's, okay, you want to move the house to like maybe two or three as opposed to your four or five.
He has stuff on it that could slip into an A priority within, you know, or same thing with C, others things on C that then could slip into B.
Wait longer, 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 then, okay, we're getting more important. Roofs are spectacular, how that is, longer you wait. Comes time, okay, well, now we have to replace all insulation.
That's totally. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions? Thank you. I guess you can sneak out if you want to.
Have a good evening.
Thanks for coming. All right, so now we're gonna go back up to A four? Is that where we are?
Yep, that's where we are, so. Just as a reminder, so for two page, I, the first division meeting is on October twenty ninth. So if you'd like to, is that the?
Carlyle?
Carlyle, so hopefully don't put a power against Travis.
You're never gonna live that long, ever.
If you would like to attack, just please let, you have to know by the thirteenth, because you have a semester on the fourteenth. So if you could, that's always a good meeting. It's gonna be, it'll probably be initially because there's so much going on everywhere, especially in the state too with pension talks and, you know, federal guidance, which is gonna be, it'll be a good meeting to go to at that point, and they have a pretty good deal as well.
Do they usually release what the topic is for the night prior to that?
Yeah, they do, and I'll be honest with you, Karen, I can't remember, I saw the dates, but I just kind of skipped email. I can't remember if they had the topic for sure yet.
Because last year's was like the A I.
Yeah, last year was like A I.
That's kind of bold though.
It was pretty cool, so they pretty have one of them, but also two, there's one that had, they talked about finance and the C P R T, which one you kind of talked about, you know, that, and I don't know how to plan for that too. So there's, it's pretty timely information, so. So with that as well, two, we do pay division, a bunch of officers, mostly officers, and then more, there's a votes. So we have to provide a vote for that also on the table. So whoever's there helps vote for the officers for I S D. Then we should have, I think, the H L S, who can provide, I apologize, the, 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 the officers, watching officers. There's also reservations and. Oh, print it up.
With this.
Yes, that. So what I ask the board is you can remember, because at November tri conference, Travis is representative, he has to represent us in both under resolutions for I S D. And so I asked them to take a look at these, and then come our November meeting, which is right before the tri conference, we'll talk about this, and basically it's, do you have any objections to any of the resolutions that you have proposed? If you do, and that's what we come to talk, and the vote, and then we say, we're gonna vote and say you want to propose to leave it or to support it, should I say, if not support it, to give guidance to Travis, what he knows and represents and votes in the tri conference.
They're recommending to adopt all of them?
They will show, so what they have, if you look at that, some of them are recommended to adopt, some of them say should not recommend to adopt, and then some of them say to not review or to discuss how you approach it. So they should be voted for.
I know, and they all say recommend.
Yeah.
Every single one of them? Okay. Okay. I think you're back up.
Facility committee, questions concerning the lunch service regular with the expense report?
Financing?
Finance.
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 Finance committee.
That's the one.
Yes. Any questions concerning the lunch service or kids' club money?
We talked about facilities committee, but I think it'd be a good opportunity now to just kind of have a quick conversations like. So as a reminder, who's on the facilities committee? So we have to, so we're gonna reach out, because sooner than later, we should set the time to kind of sit down and kind of just kind of process this, you know, together as a committee, kind of talk about this, how we want to approach this, kind of, you know, have some suggestions, kind of, hey, you know, A and B we got to do, so we have that, but what about the rest, what about everything else? How do we, we'll take a look at that, how do we kind of plan this out in long term? And then, because we have lots to go through and process. And either that means we want to walk through the boards a little bit and take a look at things too, but I think we should schedule meetings sort of later to come back and just, you know, it's gonna be probably quite a bit of meetings the next few months here. And then also then two, we get to talk with our community engagement committee, giving some feedback there and having some guidance, because we're gonna need to incorporate the committee on a lot of this. Because there's a lot to do, but it's some feedback, and I know what P T is like, and how can we do playgrounds? And they say, it's really expensive, and they can see all this, so it's like, you know, what is our priority? How have we been like, we gotta engage, you know, the committee in this process, because it is daunting. You know, there's a lot that we want to do, it is kind of expensive too, so what, how do we engage them? And how do we get the feedback and how we work through that together, to kind of really kind of have that too. So first off, just, just digest this. So you're not, I'll be reaching out then, this week, just kind of set up a meeting the next couple of weeks here, early out, early eight. So you can kind of sit down, go over that together. And in the meantime, board, if you're looking at things, and I'll share the other spreadsheet too, if there's anything you want to share with us, you know, as guidance, just share that, so you can kind of start to talk about it as well. Any other thoughts, facilities committee? Any other thoughts, facility committee?
Okay. Policy?
Policy committee, you've got your policies there?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we'll be meeting for example, first. Now, I don't know if board, you saw the one email that came from the parents today, this happened, we actually had a conversation with the parents, a good conversation. So the parents' conversation is, you know, we love most of our child, but I love the schools, but there's just some things for us we want to do. But we would still like to have participate in extra activities, because we're, our policy has not allowed that. So how, who I talked to, so you can kind of talk to them, but you also should maybe just, you know, speak out to the board, because they work on policies. Actually pretty timing because it is actually one of the, one of the policies set forward that is in this review anyway now too, so it's pretty timely to talk about, but that is just, I just wanted to kind of.
We did talk about that policy about two years ago.
Yes.
It was brought up.
Yep. Yeah, we didn't change it for that, but now this time, first, it was a vote recommended by the board too, so, but that's like kind of that, so just, I want to report and all that to.
Okay. Um, community engagement committees, so we were still trying to finalize the actual committee because Anthony and Allison had expressed interest in being on that committee, and then the third.
I guess what that's going to look like and what the commitment will be at the moment, because I got new stuff added, so.
Katie, what are your thoughts?
Sure.
Okay, is that okay with you?
Yeah, yeah, for sure, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so Anthony, Katie, and Allison.
Maybe part of the community engagement committee would be reaching out to the community, see if there's anyone that's a grant writer that would love to help be part of making some of these changes.
Anthony, you're keeping yourself really busy, just.
Yeah.
Maybe I'll roll, I won't listen.
No, you're committed, that's it, you're done, you're, you're in.
It's important work, we'll, we'll make it happen.
Well, thank you. Okay, so we're good there. And then Darian District sixty one Educational Foundation.
The big raffles here. So everyone wants to take one and pass them down. The, um, community, the Darian sixty one Education Foundation raffle, which is kind of a lottery, starts October first, um, goes the whole entire month, and there's always, there's thirty one chances to win. You can pick numbers, I think they're from zero to nine hundred and ninety nine.
You think?
I'm sure, from zero to nine hundred.
I'm going to pick nine hundred and ninety nine, it's not even going to be an option.
But you can, you can pick numbers or you can just, um, you know, say, pick a number for me. There's already been some, some purchases, which is great, you can go on the website, um, on the Darian Education Foundation website. We accept PayPal, checks, cash, um, credit cards, all of the above. Um, and all of this money, this is, I believe, again, this is my first year on the committee, but I believe this is the biggest fundraiser that they have in order to fund all the mini grants and all, everything that the Education Foundation does. So, um, it'd be awesome to get sold out. If anyone, I've been putting it on my Facebook page, I know, um, the other community members, the other, um, committee members are, you know, been reaching out to people, so. Okay, send it around, pass it around. Um, I know we already talked about it, but, um, it looks like Aneous White is not going to be able to make it.
I just got an email from Dave Moss at the Bay, so he's not going to come to the district.
Right.
Uh, it just starts, you know, Chris, so, but we'll be making a video, and so we can share, like we shown, and we have a website as well, and we'll do that too, so.
Yep.
Will you open the Dallas, right as you receive the report, I guess, so they can't, you know, make it work, you know, which is understandable, so, thank you.
Yep, so I think that's it, um, the mini grants will be coming back up again, um, I think there was, was there already an email sent out?
Sure, yeah.
Um, about the mini grants, um, coming back up. The biggest thing is really working on this, um, raffle slash lottery before the first, to sell it out.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so Board of Port.
This is the new agenda item that we talked about, so this is an opportunity, as we said, it's kind of a standing, um, agenda item, so, you know, there's an opportunity here for the board, if there's anything to share that, you know, that they've been to, um, talk about the district, maybe if you're too, you know, share. Maybe this is the time to kind of, you know, if you're like, if you're good time, like if you went to, like, or part of something else too, or whatever, something like that, whatever it is, you know, you can, this is the time for the board to share, so, any reports that you want to.
Or like how the Eisenhower girls softball team.
I was just seeing, yeah, how's this, how's the girls softball doing?
They're still doing good, um, they've had their last, uh, regular season game yesterday, so it was eighth grade night. Uh, so that was nice for the four eighth graders on the team. Uh, today was the first playoff game, uh, against Cass, they won fifteen three.
Wow.
So they've got, uh, practice tomorrow.
It was practice since.
Uh, yeah, and then they have, uh, next game Thursday, um, against the winner of two, uh, you know, two teams playing today. I don't know who won, um, but they'll play Thursday. And then if they win that one, they get to go to the championship on Friday.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
Is this like a section where we can put kind of the following month's calendar of events, where we can kind of see and, you know, if there are things, oh, it's right there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, can I add to that, like, I know, I noticed that the baseball team had an outside coach come in, and last year we did the same thing for basketball, and. So I just want to say to the community, I think that's awesome for them to step up and help us out, so we didn't have to, you know, not have a team, so that's amazing.
Yes, and the coaches, it's a father and son pair for baseball, it was a great job.
That's awesome, yeah, and appreciated very much though.
Oh, there's Hinsell South eighth grade marching band night tomorrow. That's cool. Okay.
We haven't really done any, there hasn't been too much at Mark Dela yet, but tomorrow we're having our first, uh, parent participation, um, for the second graders, and so it seems like, I guess, it's all, it wasn't like a lottery thing like sometimes it is, like all the parents get to do, go if they want to, and that's awesome.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I think that's really great, I think that's different this year than in past years, because I, um, and it's on the, it's on the, it's on Friday, so we get to be there pretty much like the whole day with them, like nine thirty to eleven thirty, and it's all the second grade parents or, or, um, guardians who can come, so it's.
That's really cool.
Really looking forward to that, and I think that'll be nice too.
Really good to share out there.
Yeah, that's I'm hoping it will be, um, so looking forward to that.
It looks like there's some fun stuff in October, so like the fall, by, in concert.
You already on the calendar?
Huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so make sure anyone else to report out? Thank you.
Yes.
So, yeah, so then, as we talked about before too, board, so I link, that's the district calendar there, um, so there are opportunities here, like, you know, if you want to take a look, like I said, there's a big, big marching band, um, you know, there's, you know, a number of, um, good meetings coming in there, so if you, um, if there's anything that's maybe take a look at, I think this is also part of a conversation for the, um, community engagement committee, they have, you know, we want to cover that in the schedule, we want to have people maybe pick something, give the recommendation to how to kind of host that too, you know, so if I had, by chance, we could parent, maybe some decent thing with. So, um, which is the matter, is to kind of, you know, have the two, we have the P T A meetings in there too, so there are a lot of things to kind of look at, and maybe kind of talk about in the schedule, and kind of see how do we, you know, tackle that together. Because you guys also have a lot of other stuff happening to utilize too, so have these meetings, so how do we want to balance that as well?
Folk dancing night at Eisenhower.
I think you should do that.
I might.
Can I ask for, um, maybe times, for example, the, the, uh, marching band night in Hinsdale South? Can we add times to the calendar so that it would just be available for people?
Uh, let me see.
Or unless it's under more detail?
Tomorrow is, um, Hinsell South marching band practice from six to eight, I'm assuming the eighth graders get to come during that time maybe?
I'm assuming so, yeah, you know, I think it's pro, I mean, I, you know what, um.
Or is it during the day?
I think it's during this one.
Oh, is that during the day, it's in daytime, got it.
No.
Yes.
Okay.
Because they're going to come over, uh, well, no, this is Mike's, this is Mike after Hinsell South, and I think the eighth grade, there are some things during the day, I think it's just put in there because I don't think we have a time for that, because that's scheduled through Mr. Howard, and so, but I can definitely get a time for every month for that. Now, we did get the times, we do put them in there as we can, um, but sometimes we're just getting the dates, you know, it's like, hey, what is the calendar, because then they're reserving, you know, they're reserving the spots in schools, or do they, or they're just saying, hey, this was a, I'm Catholic, we can definitely get some time, so. If we add them.
If we, okay, if you got, that's great, just, it would make it easier to just kind of decide whether that would be, uh, something that you could participate in.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, in, in October, we don't have two school board meetings, do we?
I saw that too.
The twenty eighth and the twenty ninth, are we meeting both nights?
Yeah.
Just, just as a side, maybe we could take a look at that.
I know, I don't know why that's the case, no, unless you really, really, really watch it.
Yeah. I kind of like you guys, but.
Only kind of?
The twenty ninth, that's the, the I S P, the division meeting.
Oh, that's probably.
Oh, is that it?
Yeah, that's probably.
Maybe.
Catch, Katie, thank you, yeah. It's gone, so that, we're not having that again. But I think, you know, ob- obviously, there's, there's things there, you can subscribe this too, you'll put it in your Google account or link to it as well, but then there's things that are there if you want to attend, then by all means. Um, and then if you do have questions about times, or can you, if you have a question like that, you can email to me.
Okay.
And I would be able to, to reach the time, sometimes, like I said, if we have it, we put it in there, but if we don't, you can always ask, but then I also think it'd be a good idea for the community engagement committee to kind of say, hey, here's our recommendation for all of us, you know, just to kind of, so we have some ideas, so that way then we're kind of, you know, being strategic about it as well.
Eighth grade marching band night at Hinsell South is at six.
Thank you, at six, thank you. And then also here, I did link to our document here, um, so this is this year's, I carried over some items from last year, but I just kind of also wanted to, so, we did a lot last year of the suggestions, so I just kind of, just, I kept it there, we crossed it off what we did, kind of made some notes, but then any one that we did not get to, carry over, because some we did not. And so these are some things that we're staying on here, um, for instance, the, uh, capital, you know, fund balance and capital projects, we had a big discussion about the projects, now we're going to continue that, so that's why it's on here, you know, it's, we have, but it's still there. Um, you know, we got, so all these items we carried over, if you look for how do we want to complete those, um, you know, last year we talked about, um, the daily rates for that, we did increase that, I actually should have posted that, actually, um, we did, we did, uh, take care of that this past spring, we'll continue to look at that as well, so we increased it to ten hundred and thirty dollars per day. For one twenty five, to share that as well too. So we're going to have to talk about this one, this we did not get to with this, so, um, we're going to have to have, you know, Travis, we talked about this, this is some future planning we want to talk about, so make sure that, you know, just because it's coming up in another, you know, year or two, so just to begin planning now, you know, so we're, you know, do that conversations, move forward. Um, and then strategic planning, that's part of our goals, and with this year we have to do, and sometime here soon, just to discuss those as well too. Are there any other topics written on board?
The only thing I was going to say, you already said you'll keep us updated on kids club, but in case anything comes out of that.
No, I will, no, I will put it on there.
Especially if we have to talk about staffing with that and that type of thing, since it's, I think that would be.
I will put it on.
Okay. Um, is there any unfinished business? Nope, okay. Action item. Um, can I get a motion to approve the resolution recognizing National Principals Month as presented?
So moved. One second.
Kate. Kate. Discussion.
Uh, so October is National Principals Month, and so wherever you, we've kind of done this, where we have had, um, the board has adopted this resolution just to recognize the principals. Um, it's known to general, you know, boarding, but it's still the recognition because the principals, this is the principals, they do a lot of work, amazing work, and so we just appreciate the recognition, so we can share this and take October to recognize that as well.
Okay. Further discussion?
Ramos?
Aye.
Severin?
Aye.
Pajera?
Aye.
Buckles?
Aye.
Renault?
Aye.
Myers, aye. Pavlo?
Aye.
Next, uh, can we get a motion to approve the purchase of a building maintenance truck, an F four two fifty four by four?
So moved.
Second.
Oh. And Anthony. Any discussion?
Yeah, so this is a request, uh, for Billy Manias team to update their truck from two thousand nine Chevy Silverado twenty five hundred to afford, uh, twenty, uh, two fifty. Um, the current truck unfortunately is just experiencing some mechanical issues as we've discussed, and also rust, including some of the, um, transmission lines are rusting out, so, uh, we're personally updating that vehicle. And that vehicle is used pretty much on a daily basis.
Very nice, and it's a new truck?
Yes.
Great.
All right, ready?
My money.
Severin?
Aye.
Pajera?
Aye.
Buckles?
Aye.
Renault?
Aye.
Myers, aye. Pavlo, aye. Oh, sorry. We're going to vote yes, right? I'll tell you on your vote. Uh, Ramos?
Aye.
It's very confident.
Yeah, very confident in that vote.
What color is it?
White.
White.
Very nice, enjoy. Uh, next, can we get a motion to approve the E I S administrative and teacher salary benefits report, school year twenty twenty five?
So moved.
Second.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Why are some capital and some not capitalized?
I think it's because this is a report that's generated out of our financial program and, and the, and the divisions, and it was how it was.
Inputted, so some people were inputted, all caps, and some were not.
As you know, many of them who are capitalized are, uh, some are.
Older, some.
Who entered the commission, so yes.
Yep, they've been here longer.
Yes. Which I call them out by some means.
Okay. Any discussion? Ready?
Pajera?
Aye.
Buckles?
Aye.
Renault?
Aye.
Myers, aye. Pavlo?
Aye.
Ramos? Aye.
Severin?
Aye.
Okay, last action item, I can get a motion to approve the I M R F salary report, school year twenty twenty five?
So moved.
I'll second.
It was Allison's. And Dana. I wasn't sure if it was Dana or Chris. Any discussion? Questions, no?
Buckles?
Aye.
Renault?
Aye.
Myers, aye. Pavlo?
Aye.
Ramos?
Aye.
Severin?
Aye.
Pajera?
Aye.
Seven zero, perfect. Okay, so next, we are, uh, can I get a motion from the Board of Education to move to close session? Okay, so next, we are, uh, can I get a motion for the Board of Education to move to close session for the appointment of employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body, or against legal counsel for the, for the public body to determine its validity. That needs to be a much shorter sentence.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
Can I say one thing?
Uh, not yet, because we're.
At the end, oh, I know.
Well, if you, if you have a public comment that you wanted to say.
Yeah, I didn't know when I could say it.
Okay, so we can't actually hack that, so we are in motion for this, um. We can just, we can pause.
And go back? I'm not gonna read that again, am I?
Sorry?
Just to read, I could read that public comments.
No, it was okay, so, you wanted to go, we're going, we're sure that's.
Okay, it'll, it'll just be like two, three minutes.
Um, I'm a parent of a kid at Eisenhower, and I talked to you on the phone today, and then I talked to Dr. Buck, my name is Tim.
Um, so I just wanted to bring it up in hopes that this, there will be better communication and easier way to handle this next time, so I was in a group chat with a bunch of moms of sixth graders yesterday, and they said my daughter heard an eighth grade boy making threats to the school. She called the hotline, the hotline called the plea, Darian, please, Darian, please, called the mom, and the mom made a report, and the police told her, we're gonna let administration know about it. So we're all in pins and needles, waiting for communication from the school, we don't know to send our kids to school in the morning, morning comes, nothing said. It turns out, Dr. Buck got a voicemail at nine thirty last night from the police officer, and he didn't check his voicemail, and then school was about to start, and then this was all brought up. The kid ended up showing up at school, is my understanding, and then the kids were placed in a security lock, and then police were called, and dogs came out, and all this stuff. So half of us sent our kids to school, half of us didn't. I think there needs to be a better way for the police to get a hold of administration, there shouldn't just be like one or two people they can get a hold of. They should have been stopped before school even started, this kid shouldn't have been allowed to get to school. I'm glad the threat wasn't credible, but you, you never know what's gonna happen, um, I work with psych kids, I work at Lundy Note, so you never know what's gonna happen with these kids. So I think there needs to be a better way for police to get a hold of school, even on off hours, and for this to be addressed before school even starts, and communicated to parents quickly, because we were left just, what's happening? Our kids are texting, scared, now they're all scared to go to school tomorrow, and I think that the police, this shouldn't have gotten this far today. This should have been stopped before school even started, and we're, um, our kid safety is based on a voicemail that didn't get checked, there's gotta be a better way. So I just wanted this to get recorded, because all of them, I thought more people would show up, my group chat said they would, and they didn't, um, so I just wanted, something that needs to be changed, doesn't seem like that hard of a communication thing to me. So I'm putting that out there, I know we spoke, Dr. Buck did admit that he got the voicemail, and don't know what happened.
Okay, thank you for that, Katie.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now can I get a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Anthony and Allison at eight thirty-four P M. Um, discussion? And we'll call.
Renault?
Uh, aye.
Myers, aye. Pavlov?
Aye.
Ramos?
Aye.
Severin?
Aye.
Pajera?
Aye.
Buckles?
Aye.
Okay.
Would I ask a favor, if we could go to the conference room?
Do you need any of this?
And we have to take our chairs with us.
Like, everybody wants to sign up?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so for the, for the official budget, every.